Welcome to the Wednesday, September 9th. Business meeting, please stand for the flag.
The United States of America. The Republic, which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Strangy?
Present.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strong?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
That's all seven here.
On to approval of minutes from the August 19th, 2020 business meeting, Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for approval of the minutes from the August 19th, 2020 business meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? All right, on to a Senate public hearing. And I'll leave a reading of public hearing notice.
Okay, we have to set a public hearing, so the council will hold a public hearing regarding RL 20-187 from Monday's meeting, which is a proposed amendment to the 2018 bond ordinance to account for an increase in the cost of improvements to the Conklin Act and Velden Street Bridges. Please note, the public hearing will be held during the next regular city council business meeting, held on Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the second floor atrium, located in City Hall. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to the meeting to clerk@cityofbingetton.com or over the telephone during the public hearing at 772-7101. City Hall will be closed to the public for the meeting. Any questions, please contact the clerk's office.
Thank you, Lee. On the public comment, you have five minutes. Lee will give the phone number, call in, please. Please be respectful. We have three letters, which you can read one right now or wait for a phone call.
Sure, we'll read the letters. So the first one here is from Jordan Helen. He's a city resident, running to express my opinion that City should not renew its school resource officer contract. The SRO program has no proven benefits in terms of keeping students safe. Study after study shows this and suggests that the only real function of SROs appears to be needlessly escalating routine disciplinary issues into criminal matters with this escalation disproportionately for students of color. Roes are not just another school, are just another part of the school to be dismantled. I believe the main interest in SROs comes from the line in the contract that has something to the effect of of their purpose being in part to promote the role of policing to students. In other words, they're more or less a propaganda project in the form of city employees. I don't want, I don't want my tax dollars going to going to ineffective security personnel that puts kids of color at risk and promote the idea that policing is good or useful. We need to divest from police and invest in programs that actually help our community. We could start by ending this needless SRO program. It's really Jordan Ellen.
Why don't we wait? Where are the other two from?
The other two are from Julian Arhart and Tina.
Why don't we wait to see if they call in? I certainly want them to do both. So Lee will give the number for everybody to call in.
Number tonight to call in is 772-7101.
All right, nobody's calling in outside that sign.
We'll leave the line open for a minute. That's 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
My name is Mary Park, and I am a city resident, 24 Laurel Avenue in Binghamton. I think one of my biggest concerns is, is our need to, well, my biggest concern is that I've seen, we do a lot of work in the criminal justice system, and what we've seen is a simple thing that would be normally, back in the day, where would be a fight in school, which often happens, since the fat nature.
Excuse me, Ms. Clark?
What turns into happening because we have the SROs.
Ms. Clark, hold on, I'm sorry.
Can everybody hear her?
Yeah, we're having trouble hearing you. Could you speak up?
Can you hear?
Oh, yeah. Maybe I'll take you off speaker. Hold on. Hi. I think my biggest concern is really turning incidents that would be normally handled differently, a fight in the school. It turns it into an assault. With the SROs in the school, what often happens is a basic fight among kids that happen and just is the nature of adolescents that sometimes we see, you know, these turning into assault. Then the other thing, you know, it like criminalizes behavior that would be normally dealt with, with detention or, or some other kind of thing. And I really think setting up students to have criminal records at such a young age really creates that, you know, the, you know, the standard thing that we all refer to is the school to prison pipeline. And I think that is really dangerous. And I myself, being a social worker, I would rather see us invest in social workers, more social workers in our schools to deal with situations and to deal with the struggles that families have and that individual students have. And that would be a better use of resources rather than police in our school that criminalizes normal behavior and really leads to that prison, to, you know, school to prison pipeline. And I've seen it happen time and time and again in our schools, and I think it's really a dangerous precedent. And I'd rather see our city council really look at, you know, if we're going to fund something or encourage funding, to fund social workers rather than, not that they're the end all and be all of everything, but I don't think it's our job to like fund kind of a PR campaign for, you know, the police officers are nice. And I don't think it actually creates that environment in the schools. It creates greater fear. We see a disproportionate number of black and brown children who are somewhat harassed or more targeted by these officers, and it creates a worse environment. And I don't think it provides protection for our kids. And I would like you all to like sit back and, I mean, I just found out about this meeting just, you know, within the last two days. And I would like you to delay this and actually really have a public hearing to get input from parents and really do some advertising and really hear what the community has to say, because I think this came kind of out of the blue. I'm sure it was on your agenda, but it really wasn't on the public's agenda. And I think that to delay this vote tonight and to give an opportunity for more and more people to comment, because I don't think this is a good use of resources in our community from our city council. I know you're only paying, you know, certain portions of the, of the thing, but I think it's really not a good direction to go. And I don't think it accomplishes what it says it's going to accomplish, and it does quite the opposite. And so I really ask that you delay this, that you really seek public comment about how we're using our resources, because in this pandemic, we also have serious other issues that we could use these resources on instead of having police in our schools that disproportionately, you know, harm our children of color.
You have one minute.
Create that prison, you know, create that, you know, pipeline to, to prison. And I just don't like seeing kids criminalized at such a young age. So that's my comment. Please delay. Look at having a real public debate on this so that people can understand what is really happening before you spend our, our limited community dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, hold on. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
John Solak, Binghamton, New York. It's interesting to me that the city of Cortland is now out of the mural business. And we have this mural that's still up. And looking over the application that Kristen Mann and Anne Warfield signed to the city. There are numerous questions that were not answered. The required insurance attachment was not made. Kristin Nicole Mann raised 2,000 or so dollars more than she set out to through crowdfunding. Now, on July 25th, I was there, and it's a commonality among these people that are associated with Black Lives Matter is that they hate elderly people for some reason. Numerous incidents all over the nation involving senior citizens being attacked by this group, physically attacked. I was one of them. I'm a heart patient. The whole 12 minutes of this attack, the whole involvement until I lost control of the iPad is on video on YouTube. Messiah Andrews, who was just arrested in Rochester, he's a New York State employee from the Binghamton area. His claim to fame was to shutting down the Columbus Day Parade. Kicked me in the face. Was distracted by another younger person, white person, who swarmed and brigaded me throughout the whole thing, chasing me down another two blocks. Now, this is no way to treat the elderly. It's no way to treat anybody. These people run phantom email campaigns. They set up fake Twitter accounts. There's no way to vet them. Now, let's go back a little while. I announced my candidacy for the school board. I was attacked by a younger person, 35 or so years old, 250 pounds perhaps, towered over me. What was my offense? I was running for the city school board. That was my offense. Candidate intimidation. These people want to have veto power over anything and everything. They deal in this cancellation stuff. These people don't know me. They don't know me at all. They don't know that I supported two black candidates from here, Josephine Burrell, a Democrat, Sidney Roberts, a Republican. They don't know, for example, that I gave to Jesse Jackson in 1984, was at his fundraiser. So that's some racist, isn't it? But that's what they deal in. They deal in smear, intimidation, increasing violence. And they're not good people. They're not nice people. And we have three of them that have all said that they lead at one time or another press account, that they lead the local Black Matters. Thomas Gray, Thomas Talon, who emailed me a direct threat, and then your mural painter, Kristin Nicole Mann, got on and said, I, he lives in Binghamton. Essentially, Talon Thomas was putting out the word that he wanted me dealt with, to get out of his city. What kind of people are these that grab cell phones, that kick people in the face, that send direct email threats? You know, there's increasing criminal penalties when you attack someone that's a senior citizen and you're much younger. I don't know what the city intends to do about this, but certainly these people, these three, which are the three problem people in this movement so far, need to be sanctioned by the city. This is horrific. You want to comment on George Floyd? Well, why don't you comment on me? I live right here in the city.
You have one minute.
So let's stop this hate-hating movement. And that mural was supposed to be gone in 30 days. There was no permit extension issued. And that permit, that, that Black Lives Matter mural, so-called mural, should be eradicated like it's been eradicated in Cortland. Let's not have two separate rules. Let's not have deference just because of race. They got a permit, there was no late fee extracted, no insurance, and now it's overdue. Let's get that taken down. It's disgraceful. And the people that are associated with this are highly violent and attack senior citizens. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you guys on Zoom hear him? Well, did everybody hear him?
Yeah, I could hear him.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The number again to call in is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your full name and address for the record.
This is Carrie Renia. I live on Chapin Street in Binghamton. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I know this is really challenging, the meetings being held this way and folks feeling like they're isolated, more isolated from the process than is typically the case. And I've called before, and I'm going to just implore the city one more time. City council representatives, the administration, corporation council, anyone who will listen. In this time of these great challenges that we have, it's more important than ever that people don't feel locked out of the process. It's more important than ever that there be complete transparency. More transparency than we've ever had before. It's imperative under these current circumstances. I sent an email to council this afternoon. As of 1:10, the city council business meeting agenda for tonight's meeting had not been put on the website. The legislation had not been put on the website. At a time when people have to, when it's more challenging than ever for people to be it's incumbent upon the city to make things easier, not harder. Not publicizing the meetings and the agendas far in advance is really, is unforgivable at this point in time with what's going on. Now, to that, to that end, okay, after, after saying all of that and really trying to stress how frustrating this is for people who want to be involved, because I hear it from people all the time. You had a caller a little earlier who said that she just found out about the SRO contract a couple of days ago. Now, I understand it was on your work session agenda several weeks ago, and the city's not alone in this. I mean, I don't know when the school board is taking up this issue or if they already have, but here it is with the city. And so now, now it's incumbent upon you to do everything you can. In this day and age, with everything that is going on around the country, around growing mistrust of the police, around the Black Lives Matter movement, around trying to address some of the systemic racism that exists. I would think that the city would want to make more of an effort to solicit public input. Now, I know two council members made an effort, as much as they could make an effort in the current circumstances through social media, to solicit input from their constituents. And, and I appreciate that, and I think that was great. But I think it's incumbent upon all of council to publicize that this contract is coming up, to ask for public input. The mayor should be asking. He's, he's touting this task force and doing all of these things that, that he can to try and improve policing community relations here in Binghamton. Well, this is a really good step that could be taken, to, to reach out to the public and solicit input. I put three kids through the Binghamton school system. I love the school district. I had a great experience in the school district, but you know what? I know lots of people who didn't. And I know lots of people whose black and brown children were not treated fairly. And I can point you in the direction of a lot of white children who will tell you the same stories. And I read through the contract. I have to tell you, I was super disturbed by the fact that I had to get down to bullet point number eight, I think. I don't have it in front of me right now. But I think it was bullet point number eight, before we mentioned the emotional well-being of children. I'm sorry, that probably should have been one or two. How are other communities doing it? Because a lot of people are doing away with SROs, or they're handling it in different ways. I understand the need for school security, I do, but I think that you need to hear, the city needs to hear, and the school district needs to hear from people who are adversely affected by the presence of uniformed officers in the school. So that's just one example. It's of, of why it's so important for the city now to make greater strides to be transparent. I know.
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name is Micah Janong. Address is 31 Avalon Road, Binghamton, New York. I'm calling because I just wanted to make my voice heard on the subject of renewing the contract for a school resource officer. I think that in-school policing isn't helping. It is really just serving to taking kids out of our school and funneling them into the prison system. Criminalizing our children is wrong, and it's not what we need within our local school system. Statistically, juvenile crime rates have been dropping for years, but the suspension rates have been increasing. And there is a link between the suspension rates of children in our.
I'm sorry, could you stop for a minute? Council president wants to say something?
Sure.
The clerk pointed out, she's not a city resident. I'll take a motion to waive the rules to lower it some.
I'll move.
I need a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, you can continue.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't currently live within city limits, but in the process of purchasing a home in the city limits in which my child was then, at that point, be a student within the Binghamton city school system. So I do have a personal investment in the issue. My question is, how can kids excel in schools if they're being kicked out of the school? SROs are not trained to work with students, but to work with criminals. They're not counselors, they're not social workers, they don't have proper psychological training to be in our school system and dealing with our children. They're used to, they are really there and being used to enforce racist sexist dress codes and policies that are causing suspensions for students simply being themselves. Things ridiculous like letting an African-American student wear braids or an Afro. Situations are escalating from simple disciplinary problems to being referred to police more quickly in school systems that have contracts with SROs. There was a study done by Jason Nance. Forty-seven percent of fights without weapons are referred to law enforcement versus only 14% being referred to law enforcement in schools without SROs versus schools with SROs. So the presence of a school resource officer, of a police officer within our school system is directly leading to student arrests to students ending up within the prison system in our country. That is essentially all I have to say, that I, I don't think it's safe for these people to be in our schools, that we need to look at other systems like restorative justice in California that has greatly reduced chronic absenteeism and has increased their graduation rates. That there are other ways that we can deal with these disciplinary issues in ways that are putting our students first, their well-being first, and not funneling them into a racist system, not funneling them into the prison industrial complex. That's not what we need for our students here. And I thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and address for the record.
My name is Sarah Ger, and I live at 557 St. Anger. And I, I was very new at this a few weeks ago, and I've been, I've been watching you for a few weeks now. And I want to affirm that I agree with the folks who voice concerns about SROs in the school district. And I think that research does show some very charming numbers of detrimental outcomes for some of the most vulnerable children in the school district when there are SROs in school. And I, I don't have a lot more to add to that argument. I just want to also include an observation that I have made myself. A few weeks, I've seen grant money be accepted by the council for the hiring of a new police officer. I see in the agenda, in the notes on the end of the agenda, numerous funds being accepted for police. I see an affirmation of fallen police officers, an affirmation of honoring fallen police officers. I see a lot of work just being done to support the police. And I'm not necessarily super critical of that, but what worries me is that when money was passed, it's a big note, funds of new police officers being hired, several, I forget what it was. There was a conversation about perhaps re-appropriating some funds to hire more social workers or other people who think interest and stress could contribute other than police officers, which would be in line with some of the new ways that are emerging, new understandings that are out of bounds. And I don't see a conversation about that at this moment. And I, I don't see a lot of conversations among the people about, I don't see a lot of, I guess I don't see a lot of movement towards addressing structural white discrimination in, in. the community. And I would, I think the SRO officer issue is obviously a focal point for this movement. But I'm really interested to know if the city council or the school district has made any movement whatsoever to replace the SRO officers with more school guidance counselors or a social worker or somebody else who could kill the whole that and SROs, perhaps, in schools, but in healthy, well-documented, more successful. And I don't necessarily like that. So I want to encourage all of you to see the general trend and emerging understanding of how government and community policing cities can be, and to think about how we can introduce real thinking and really make this better. Thank you.
We're getting some feedback from somebody's digital setup. If you guys could help mute, that'd be great. That number again to call in is 772-7101. Thank you. Whoever muted, looks like they fixed it.
Was it John?
It's under water.
That number again to call in is 772-7101.
All right, we'll move on with the agenda now. Public comment is over.
Okay, I have two more letters.
Yeah, I was going to be. Just got two more ready to leave, but the public comment is over on the phone.
Okay, so we have one more letter from a Julia Mahar. Police resource officers do not benefit students. Studies have shown they escalate minor situations and disproportionately target minorities. Police have no business being social workers and counselors. They are not trained for that, and it is not fair to ask them to do that work. What is more fair to both officers and students would be to hire more mental health staff and to let police do police work. Please let Binghamton police do their jobs and fight crime while counselors and social workers fight the problems in schools. Sincerely, Julia Mahar. Then our last letter is from Tina Chronopoulos. Hello, my name is Tina Chronopoulos, and I live in Sofia Rosnety's district, and I'd like to address the council on matters related to the police. At the last council meeting, a public comment was made by how folks in Binghamton have been working for years on building good community relations with the police. That may well be the case. That doesn't mean, however, that I can agree with the caller's assessment of the Binghamton Police Department as quote-unquote unstellar. Nor does this mean that we, the residents of the city of Binghamton, should not take an interest in the work of this agency and the city council and mayor who oversee their operations. To start with, the agency is dragging its heels when it comes to transparency and accountability. Just take a look at the Binghamton Police Department's website. There is nothing available there of substance. There isn't even a link that would allow me to submit a misconduct complaint if I wanted to. Secondly, the department has a long way to go to achieve a modicum diversity of its 135 employees, eight people of color, and the rest 127 are white. This is not in proportion to the racial makeup of Binghamton, which according to the 2010 census was 77% white. Third, under the watch of Mayor David, the budget of the police department has increased steadily, as has the number of police officers. Let me also remind you that with the help of the police officer and the guise of a politician, the Binghamton Police had added an armored truck to its arsenal that is usually deployed in military situations. Not only that, if you want to apply to be a police officer with the city of Binghamton, two years of military service can be substituted for college credit or serving as a police officer elsewhere. Why is it not possible to substitute training or work as a mental health counselor similar? Finally, as I'm sure council members are aware, it is proving beyond difficult to get basic information from the Binghamton Police Department, whether that's related to the operations manual or the disciplinary records.
I can run it one.
No, there's more.
Oh.
Just the rest of it.
The rest of it.
Yeah. It may well be that community members have been working tirelessly to build relationships with the police and indeed better and safer neighborhoods. What I want others are, what I and others are asking is slightly different and yet related, namely this: we need fewer officers and fewer weapons that we need to treat people of color with dignity and respect. We need to invest in an alternative and community-based health and safety. We need to demilitarize police, starting with scrapping the possibility of substituting military service for college credit or work as police officer and getting rid of military-grade trucks. Moreover, and now I'm addressing the white people in the room and who are listening, stop making apologies for the police who have likely never harassed you or posed a threat to you. Listen to people of color when they tell you that the police pose a threat to them. Look at the news and realize that the police, an arm of the state, are killing people of color and standing idly by when white men with guns or white men in cars threaten and kill those protesting police brutality. Civil disobedience is not our problem. Our problem is civil obedience. Our problem is the people are obedient in the face of poverty and starvation and stupidity. Our problem is that the people are obedient while the jails are full of petty thieves, and all the while, the grand thieves are running the country. That's our problem. Thank you.
Thank you. If you muted your microphone, please turn it back on so we can speak now. The preferred agenda in the registry for the conference, please.
Yes.
Would you like to move it to the preferred agenda?
So, the first item on the preferred agenda tonight is introductory ordinance 20-77, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance amending the 2020 general fund budget and water fund budget to increase unemployment insurance for COVID-19 furloughs from various departments.
Comments on this?
Next is introductory ordinance 20-78, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to allow the city of Binghamton control, that's to execute refinance certification and supplemental agreements with Environmental Facilities Corporation or 2012 bonds.
Comments on this, please?
Next, we have introductory ordinance 20-79, considered in finance. This is an ordinance amending the city of Binghamton. Sorry, this is an ordinance amending the city of Binghamton 2021 budget submission schedule.
Comments on this?
Next, we have introductory ordinance 20-3 finance. This is an ordinance to amend the FY45 CDVG budget to fund parks improvements.
Again, for full disclosure, I'm going to recuse myself from that portion. I'm employed by one of the successful bidders at Direct Park Transport.
So, does that mean we would have to move it from the preferred agenda so you can do so for that resolution itself, that ordinance itself?
Yeah, Mr. President, a motion would have to be made to remove that from the preferred agenda because if it's a recusal on one vote, then you'd be recusing yourself from the entire preferred agenda.
Right, so, somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to remove RL 20-80?
Yes.
Or, okay, I'll make a motion to remove RL 20-80 from the preferred agenda.
Okay, and that doesn't need a second or anything on that? Okay.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to allow President Scanlon to recuse himself from introductory ordinance 20-80 for the pre-stated reasons.
Does that need a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, and then we probably need all of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
All right. So then the last item on the preferred agenda tonight is introductory resolution 20-89, considered in Public Works and Parks Committee. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Parton and La Judas DPC, or Comprehensive Sewer Pump Station Study and Preliminary Engineering Report for Pump Station.
Comments on this? Do you need to voice roll call?
We need a motion to accept the- Mr. President, motion to accept the amended preferred agenda, which does not include introductory ordinance 20-80.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Second. Okay.
All in favor? Actually, please do four. All right, you need a voice vote for that.
Roll call on this, please.
Okay. Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Okay, not the preferred agenda. Introductory ordinance 20-81, considered planning, Councilman Strong.
Should we, Mr. President, should we just do 20-80 first? Kind of on that? Okay, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna introduce introductory 20-80, which we just voted to remove from the agenda. So I ask council to, for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-80, an ordinance to amend fiscal year 45 CDVG budget to fund park improvements.
Second.
Comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Okay. Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
And President Scanlon abstains.
Yep.
Okay, so that's six i's, one abstention, Scanlon.
Introductory ordinance 20-81, considered planning, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Introductory ordinance 20-81 is an ordinance authorizing the sale of a portion of 124 Washington Street to Holly Street Hospitality, Inc. for $1,000. This introductory ordinance has three motions under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SECR. So if you bear with me for a second while I go through those, the first two motions will require a voice vote, and the last one will require a roll call vote. First motion is to declare the city a lead agency under SECR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you. The second motion is to identify the proposed action as unlisted under SECR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, Councilman Strong.
Third motion is to issue a negative declaration under SECR for the following reasons. This is part of a vacant lot commonly known as Parkland City, which is adjacent to a number of commercial businesses, including restaurants. In order to expand outdoor seating capacity to the adjacent restaurant, the city is conveying a portion of the lot approximately, I'm not sure how many square feet that is, I don't know if we need that information. The city may be the same accommodation to another adjacent restaurant in 2010. If use, if the use is abandoned, title will revert to the city. The transfer is de minimis. It was approved by the planning commission, and the area in question was not used by the public.
Second.
All in favor?
That needs a roll call.
Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Okay, that's seven i's, zero n's. So now, Councilman Strong will need to introduce the legislation and pass it.
Now that SECR's done. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Lee. I ask council unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-81, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a portion of 124 Washington Street to Holly Street Hospitality, Inc. for $1,000.
Second.
Quick questions, comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
You have your resolution, 20-90, considered planning, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council unanimous consideration of introductory resolution 20-90, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from Bosco's, the amount of $1,170.75 for the Binghamton Police Department.
Second.
Comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
You have your resolution, 20-91, considered planning, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution 20-91, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, DBA Verizon Wireless, 113 suite, for installation of a cellular antenna.
Second.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
You have your resolution, 20-92, considered employee, Councilman Scringi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration for introductory resolution 20-92, a resolution approving a one-year extension of the current Civil Service Employees Association contract.
Need a second?
Second.
Comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Councilman Scringi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
You have your resolution, 20-94, considered municipal.
Mr. President, point of order, I think we skipped over introductory resolution 20-93, sir. Mr. President, point of order, I think we skipped over introductory resolution twenty dash nine three, sir.
And I'm actually having a really hard time hearing you, Mr. President.
Joe, so we, we didn't get a motion at twenty dash nine three?
Um, yes, Mr. President, we completed twenty dash nine two but not twenty dash nine three yet. We, we just approved the CSEA contract. And next we need to approve the firefighters' contract, and that's ninety-three. Sorry.
Introductory resolution twenty dash nine three, considered employees, Councilman Scaringe.
Thank you, Mr. President, I stand and ask for unanimous consideration for introductory resolution twenty dash nine three, resolution approving a one-year extension of the Binghamton Firefighters Local 729 AFL-CIO IAFF contract. This current resolution and the one that just passed deals with both our Binghamton Firefighters Union and the city employees represented by CSEA for one-year extensions on their contract for zero salary increases due to COVID-19.
Second.
Comments?
Call a question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall?
Councilman Scaringe?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, introductory resolution twenty dash nine four, considered municipal, Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty dash ninety-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an extension agreement with the Binghamton City School District for school resource officers at the high school and middle schools for 2020, 2021.
Second, sorry, sorry, I had a problem with my microphone, sorry.
Second, comments on this? Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, this, let me, sorry, I'm dealing with my new setup now. I, I have to echo what the, what all of the callers who called in about this are saying that we're, we're in a time when people are, are screaming for police accountability and we're seeing how we're increasingly criminalizing, you know, people in general, but, you know, I think school resource officers are a way that police kind of, we, we don't realize it, but we're sort of normalizing this criminality. And that's not to say that I have anything against specific school resource officers. I happen to have worked with some, some of them at my job and they are really lovely, wonderful people who are very much invested in the, you know, building relationships with students, but I don't agree with having students only able to access those kinds of relationships with someone who is in uniform, who has a firearm. I think that we can very much do our students, you know, give them similar types of support with someone who is not necessarily an armed, uniformed law enforcement officer. The school-to-prison pipeline is a national phenomenon where we, we criminalize disciplinary actions that would otherwise just be handled within the school, maybe with the administration, but we see, you know, studies show that school resource, school resource officers and the policing of students disproportionately affects students of color, in particular, black students, and also students with disabilities. And it sweeps them up more easily into the criminal justice system, whereas we don't need to be criminalizing, you know, disagreements or other things that happen within the school. I think that school resource officers only do a disservice to our students and we need to find a different, better way to provide those supports and that sense of safety besides having law enforcement officers in the schools.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something.
Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I want to thank those who reached out to me expressing either their support or opposition regarding this. I've had lots of conversations with folks in the community and also in the schools. And I just wanted to share a little bit of information in hopes to provide some clarification and also to kind of, maybe for a little bit of an understanding as to why I'm voting the way that I am. So specifically, I also wanted to just quickly address just a couple of points that were brought up tonight, such as police resource officers do not benefit the students, police have no business being social workers and counselors, they're not trained for that, et cetera, and also the mental health piece. So these resource officer agreements have received bipartisan support in the past city councils and have been in place for years. And my understanding is that high school especially is going back for, you know, multiple administrations. At the end of the day, the school district wants this program, the teachers want this program. And I say that because I personally reached out to the superintendent of Binghamton Schools and her message was very clear to me, they support this. I also spoke with the principal at middle school and others, but basically the message that was given to me was that the kids would be, this is actually, I'm quoting her, the kids would be lost without their resource officer. So a, as a small example, Officer Keller over at West Middle today stayed past her shifts just helping in the distribution of Chromebooks for students. She was described as a phenomenal resource for students and parents. They appreciate her presence in the school, not just, God forbid if something horrible happens, but also just her being present and checking in and making sure that everybody is okay. The majority of the officer's time is really spent supporting families, students, and administration in any way possible. Regarding the criminalizing kids, my understanding is the resource officers do not handle discipline of students, they turn the incident over to the building administration. Also, what I was, you know, and I've known this, but also in the conversations that I've had this past week, the same officers are assigned to one school for the entire year, I think that's really important. Students get to know the officer, they build relationships with the officer. And, and so the officer really is able to provide critical services, building relationships and trust. And we talk about that, we talk about ways to build relationships in the community, between the community and the police. Also, I think it is important to note that these officers apply for this particular position. This is something that they really want to do, this is something that they feel really strongly about. In addition, I'd like to also point out that this is not, you know, a Democrat-Republican thing. In the past, the Broom County Legislature approved a countywide school resource officer program with bipartisan support. I think that's really important to know. I can't say unfortunately that I was aware of this. So, um, our Democratic colleagues in the Broom County Legislature that represent the city of Binghamton residents voted to approve a countywide school resource officer program, and I would encourage folks to look this up, it's on their website. Couple of points that came up regarding police officers not being social workers and counselors. I don't look at it as our officers wearing those hats. And I guess you could say the same thing nowadays when we're asking social workers to, to go to calls regarding, say, domestic violence, et cetera, it's a similar thing, right? I mean, those are situations where police officers typically respond, so our social workers all of a sudden asked to be officers. It shouldn't be an all-or-nothing approach. And if we're going to not just talk that and will continue to talk about community engagement and embracing holistic approaches in the way that we help our kids, then we need to support this. Lastly, regarding mental health services, again, it does not have to be an all-or-nothing. As a social worker and especially as a mental health provider, as a clinical social worker, I can speak to how critical those positions are and I certainly support funding for those programs as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments, please?
Mr. President, this is Councilwoman Riley. I'm having some throat issues, so I apologize in advance. I want to thank my councilwomen for also providing comment because we all did the investigative work to kind of make our decision about tonight. I too talked to Ms. Thompson about the SROs and what we must be able to do as legislators is separate the data and statistics from the individuals which we have come to know and love. I can say personally, my daughter loved her SRO at West because he would help her with the snacks or whatever, but now he's no longer at West, he's moved on. So we have to look at what has been proven through the data opposed to looking at the individual characteristics of the people that are in those roles. During these conversations, and again, I want to thank the public for giving us calls, emails, posts, what have you. But through these conversations this week and the week prior, we also learned that, yes, the desire is to increase the resources in terms of the social worker and supports. As we know, they are not full-time. In fact, I think all buildings have one assigned. We are in need of not only social workers, but nurses too, so it's not an all-or-nothing, and I agree with you there, Sophia. However, according to Executive Order 203 and looking at the change in the landscape recently, it's important that we as a community utilize evidence-based methods. And if the evidence does not support improvement versus our anecdotal, individualized interactions, then we must sit down and address the concerns of the global population. And what I'm hearing again is that we take our messages from those that are proactive enough to reach us. But what about the mother who feels as if she cannot trust us to advocate on her behalf because of what has happened in the school system? Let's think about them as well. So let's look at the data, let's make informed decisions. And as we move to address Executive Order 203, we will start employing evidence-based data to ensure that we are effectively serving our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, other comments, please, Councilman Burns?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The SRO officers bear this opposition to the SRO officer. However, I'm willing to listen to, to all the arguments and all the data. I did speak to a principal of an elementary school, I spoke to some teachers, I spoke to some cops. And the people that I spoke with are in favor of the SROs. However, when I did some research in other cities, it does seem that it is a nationwide sort of movement of getting rid of these SRO officers. There are even some teacher unions that would like to do away with them and have voted them out of some of the schools, I think it was Los Angeles. Could be wrong on that, but anyway, I, I would like, I spoke to Councilwoman Friedman earlier today and first of all, I think that if we were to say no to this now and get rid of the SRO officers and not renew this, the schools don't have a backup, they rely on SROs now for their safety or whatever, whatever, you know, all the shootings that we had a couple of years ago, you know, everybody feels safer having a cop with a gun in the school, including me. And, but I, I would like to start a conversation, this is really a conversation for the school board, they're the ones that are requesting the police. And they're the ones that are supposedly, not supposedly, they are the experts on children. So if the school board is requesting it, who am I to call them wrong? However, I would like to, I would like to start a conversation, which I've spoken to some school board members as well, I talked about, I spoke to teachers and principals, but I spoke to some school board members. And I would like to start a conversation with the school board and the city council and bring in, you know, everybody's got all this data, 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 but I'd like to, let's bring it all together so we can all look to where the data came from, who's got it, see what the parents think, see what the principals think, and do it as a community altogether. And I, I think it can, it can be done with maybe us going to a school board meeting and discussing it. So that's what I intend to do and, but I think that doing away with it now, there's a lot of people that will criticize President Trump when he says he wants to get rid of Obamacare and we say you can't get rid of, he doesn't have a backup for Obamacare. Well, I don't think that we should get rid of the cops in the school unless we know how we're going to keep the kids safe without the cop. What is, what is the backup for that? So I think that are all, those are, I love the discussion and I am willing to listen to it. And, but I just want to bring everybody together and move on with it that way. Thank you.
Other comments on this? Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo Councilman Burns and also I noticed that there were multiple callers who requested that we be more proactive in soliciting community input. I was wondering if I could take maybe a temperature check and see how my colleagues feel about if that's necessary, if we think that maybe it would be beneficial to hold this over and be more deliberate about the, the community input that we're soliciting before we make a decision on this?
I would not be in favor of holding this over, that's my opinion, what opinion?
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak up? Well, let's, let's, let's follow this through then, Councilwoman Friedman, alright? Is there any other comments on this?
Well, I did just want to say, because I know, you know, everyone says, oh, there's, there's data, there's data, there's data. There is a paper that was published by ACLU and it is entitled Bullies in Blue: Origins and Consequences of School Policing. And I was looking at this document because it's, for me, it's less about, excuse me, for me, it's less about the individual officers and more about the, the systems, you know, the overall patterns and systems of what this, like, the, the systems where the SROs fit into and there, you know, there's a lot of research in this paper that talks about how SROs actually do not increase the safety of students and how they were largely put into schools as a response to the Columbine shooting in 1999 as an effort to prevent mass shootings. And since then, what tends to happen in schools that have SROs, which tend to be lower-income schools with higher populations of students of color, specifically Latino, Black and Brown students, and it just increases the, the expediency with which students are swept up into the justice system with this broken windows policy of, you know, cracking down on little, little issues in an effort to prevent bigger issues from happening, but what, you know, that's not really in practice how it works. And I, I want to do everything in my power to prevent the school-to-prison pipeline. And I don't think we need to know exactly what we would replace the SROs with. And I don't think we need to know exactly what we would replace the SROs with in order to recognize that this is a problematic and harmful program. There are a lot of people who are even saying more counselors, more social workers, like anything, you know, we, this is a relatively new program in, in the high school, it was, I believe, instated in like 2005, I think was the year. So they, Binghamton High School students have survived for a long time, for many more years, without an SRO than they have with an SRO. And I think that fear of not knowing exactly what the plan is shouldn't stop us from preventing a, you know, something problematic and harmful from, from happening. That's my two cents.
At this, at this point, I'll take a motion to hold this over, or we're going to vote. I mean.
Okay. I think that I would like to make a motion to hold it over because I think that the members from the community have expressed that they were not aware of this, that we as council members, and I will include myself in this, did not do a good enough job of publicizing this decision. And this is a hugely important decision that affects lots and lots of people, I think many of whom are not at the table right now, and we have our constituents telling us directly we felt left out of this process. So therefore, I'm going to make a motion to hold this over.
Second.
Okay, this will be held over. We'll look at lead poll everybody next week, we'll have a meeting next week on this, I don't, I don't, we'll talk about when the next meeting is, right? We'll, we'll talk about what the dates, the next meeting at a future time, right? I'm not sure what that even means right now, but it is held over right now. Move on, please. Introducing Resolution 20-95, Considered Municipal and Public Affairs, Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of introductory Resolution 20-95, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an extension agreement with Binghamton University for a university liaison officer for 2020, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, Nicole?
Councilman Scaringe?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Nay.
Councilman Burns?
20-95.
Yes, this is the.
Lee, there, Lee, I thought, sir.
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
So that's five ayes, two nays, Riley and Friedman.
Okay, Introducing Resolution 20-96, Considered Municipal and Public Affairs, Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for unanimous consideration for introductory Resolution 20-96, a resolution supporting the Binghamton Police Department and honoring Binghamton's fallen police officers.
Second.
Comments on this, please? Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm going to bring up this same criticism that was brought up when I proposed a, the resolution that ended up being called Resolution Condemning Hateful Acts and Racism, and the pushback that I received from that resolution was that my Republican colleagues felt like their voices were not heard in the original resolution, even though there, there were no questions or anything brought up at the original, at the meeting where it was originally proposed. So I was under the assumption that there were no, there were no additions or changes to it. And then what ended up happening was that we, we ended up passing a bipartisan resolution, we incorporated feedback and changes and amendments from all members of council, and I do not feel like that same process was afforded to this resolution that was originally in honor of Patrolman Lee Barta, whose 25th, the 25th anniversary of his death passed recently in August. And the, the way that this resolution was brought for allow, it was now appears to us in a manner that allowed for none of the contributions from any of the Democratic members of, of council, none of those were incorporated in this version. So this feels like a partisan, partisan piece of legislation, and there are some things in here that I don't feel comfortable with, like I don't feel comfortable with pledging my support for specific initiatives like the Bulletproof Fest initiative. I also don't feel comfortable, and I said this before, I don't know if this was the intent, but a pro-police resolution that comes weeks after a, an anti-racism resolution, it feels like a counterpoint. And the fact that none of the contributions that I made to this made it in make me not feel comfortable supporting this piece of legislation as it is. Thank you.
Other comments, please?
Mr. President, can I say something?
Councilwoman Resnetti, please. Councilwoman.
As I said it the other day, I guess it was yesterday, this was not in response to any other resolution that we had supported. The timing may be such that it feels like it is, we can't help, the time of Lee Barta's death, his murder 25 years ago, and when his anniversary came up. So I feel that it was appropriate to honor him. Folks can look at any way I suppose they want to look at it, but that's, and again, I speak for myself, this was to honor him and to honor the work that he does. Regarding, you know, some of the changes, I didn't feel, I didn't see it to be very collegial in, in any way attempting to work together. You know, when we're talking about not supporting the Bulletproof Fest issue, what, why not? Should we not protect our officers? If it was my husband, my kid, my whatever, I would want them to be protected. That is just that, that's what it means. It means protecting the lives of officers who, I mean, it doesn't matter who you are, I would think you, we all understand that they go out there and do dangerous work. You know, when things like the number of the law enforcement officers that were killed in 2019 is omitted, you know, it's troubling, it's troubling because it takes away from the work that's done, the dangers that are, they engage in, and the reasons why full officers like Barta get murdered. Certain phrases such as have saved, Binghamton Police Officers Have Saved Citizens in Life and Death Situations, that was omitted. Why? Is that not true? Is it, is it, is a false information? Again, I feel like it really took away from the work Police Officer Lee Barta did and others do. Nothing here was false, it's facts, and, you know, going back to feeling like it was collegial and wanting to work together, I don't think that's the sense that certainly I received when I saw those omissions. Yeah, I guess that's all I have to say about that right now, there's a lot more that I could say, but certainly, one thing if I could highlight it, it was absolutely not in response to anything to the other resolution, and I, I guess it's unfortunate that the timing of Lee Barta's, you know, anniversary isn't, I don't know, convenient for us all, doesn't work with our schedules and our timing, it is what it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments on this? Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Lee Barta death 25 years ago, it was heartbreaking. Police officers do risk their lives protecting us. I do wish some of the language from the bipartisan one that we, we had, I thought we were going to put the two together and, and have it worked out together, but it didn't happen. But at this point, I, I, I feel wonderful that we're able to honor these officers that gave their lives for our city and for our families. And at this point, I hope that we can, you know, the governor has got an executive order, I keep bringing this up, but Governor has an executive order that we have to pass a new policing law by April next year, which is approaching. And these two, you know, the anti-racism resolution that we passed, and this one that we passed, they're non-binding resolutions, they're great, but now I would love us to all work together to really come up with something that is going to be great for the Police Department and great for the community, and, and bring about a change. And, and anyway, that's about all I got to say about it, and I'm, my regards go out to the Barta family and all the other families of policemen who died. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. President, can I say something real quick?
Sure, Councilman Strong.
Thank you. I just want really quick to say, reiterate something I said probably six or eight weeks ago now, and that is whether the timing seems crazy or not, obviously we can't control when Lee Barta passed away, the anniversary, and obviously before we were, you know, looking at current events, which you'd have to have your head in the sand not to see what's going on around us in, in our country and be concerned, and, and realize that, you know, we need to continue these conversations and to, we need to address these things, and we need to have open conversations about them. And I just want to say that I still believe and do not understand that these two issues are not mutually exclusive. And I'm not saying people are saying that they are necessarily, but it feels like in some ways, one or the other, and, and I just don't understand that, I never will. You can be against systemic racism and acts of violence, and you can support the police. To me, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer. That doesn't mean that we don't need improvements in the police or have those conversations of how we can improve that, that's not, that's not it at all. I just want to say that, that, that these two things are not mutually exclusive, in my opinion, and I'm, I'm proud to support whether it was, the timing was, was suspect to some people or not, I don't think it was intended that way, but I just want to say for myself that I'm proud to be able to sponsor and vote for both of these resolutions. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I definitely would have supported a resolution that was focused on honoring the, the memory of Officer Lee Barta, and of course, I would never imply that his, the timing of his death was inconvenient, but the spirit of the legislation has been changed from only honoring his memory, even the name of it has been changed to be a blanket support of law enforcement, and that's what doesn't sit right with me, not that, you know, not that the, the timing of this was like done on purpose, obviously it was not, but I think we have to take a look at the way that the national dialogue has been going, that people first started saying Black Lives Matter, and then people, that, that was when people started saying, no, no, all lives matter, and then after that, people started saying blue lives matter. So it's this, it's this shift of these two groups of people being pitted against each other as if they're opposing forces, right, as if the police are opposite from Black people, and we know that that's not true, but we also know that the way that police are in, in this country are problematic, I will leave it at that, and it's, you know, I think what it really boils down to is that the, the exact criticism of the other non-binding resolution is now portraying itself again, where this is, you know, just like in the last non-binding resolution, my colleagues did not feel comfortable putting their name on a piece of legislation for which they had no contribution, and this piece of legislation that's in front of us now has none of my contribution in it, even after the, those contributions were submitted, and that's, that is why I don't feel comfortable voting in support of this. It, I, I very much would like to honor the memory of Patrolman Barta, the Lee Barta Community Center is in my district and does amazing things for the community, but I can't get behind a piece of legislation that has none of my contributions in it.
Other comments, please?
President Scanlon?
President Scanlon?
This is Councilwoman Riley.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to, again, thank all of the council members for providing their feedback, and I echo the sentiment of many of you. I do believe that it's okay to support law enforcement when they're doing their jobs, and also okay to condemn, to condemn officers that tarnish the, the badge and abuse their powers. This piece of legislation or this resolution, I wholeheartedly, if we focus on the attributes, the celebration, the commemoration of the service of the patrolmen, the seven Binghamton Police Officers that were killed in the line of duty, then I, I do agree that that needs to happen. However, and as we mentioned, you know, we can commemorate those acts, we can vaguely, we can vehemently oppose what's happening in Minneapolis and Rochester, and we can do both, right? Commemorate yet oppose, one does not preclude the other. This resolution, though, takes away, the resolution that is on the table tonight, again, is the first version without the discussion, without the ability to kind of merge the thoughts of both sets of authors, a bipartisan approach. Yes, Sophia provided some feedback tonight, but that wasn't provided during the work session, we were given the option, either version two or version one. With the last resolution, we were able to walk line by line to make amendments so that it was a bipartisan effort. Version one does not have my voice. Now, had we talked about some of the things Sophia brought up, I may have wanted to side with her. I didn't even know what the Leahy, Leahy, what is it, the Leahy, whatever it is, you can read it in the document, but until we went to research it, so when a, a piece of legislation comes to us, we have to go away, find out what it really means, and then come back and advocate for it. And, and, and what I, I guess I'm saying is, we support the efforts of Lee Barta and the other officers listed at the top. What I don't support is having a call to always advocate or tie certain pieces of federal and/or local partnerships in the resolution where we were not able to discuss and outline what these things mean. That, to me, again, was very problematic. That, to me, again, was very problematic. So if we can go back and walk through and make it a bipartisan effort, that would be great. However, giving me one or nothing doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, let me say something. So we submitted this to you, and you, the Democrats had a lot, it certainly had a where we could look at this, right? And at that point, as opposed to altering what we said, you chose to write your own. And there was probably two lines left in it. So you didn't alter what was there. You didn't add what was there. You wrote your own. And last night, when I said, "We could be here for weeks and months trying to decipher what's what," because they weren't even close to say the same thing. That's why I said one or two. And at this point, I think we're beating this up pretty good. So at this point, I will take a motion to hold it over, and we're going to vote, because we could talk all night. Everybody's probably got their mind made up by now. If somebody's talking to me, it's not going to change my mind. So at this point, I will take a motion to hold it over, and we're going to vote.
I'll call the question, Ms. Frozen.
This is the call.
Councilwoman Skorjic?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnady?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Nay.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
So that's five ayes, two nays, Riley and Friedman.
Okay, on a communication, well, council members, we'll start with Councilwoman Skorjic today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to, I wanted to take the opportunity just to thank Bernice St. Clair, our Superintendent of Roads. We had a, we had a number of traffic lights that were up on, forgive me, not traffic lights, street lamps that were out along the Grand Boulevard, Grand Boulevard corridor. There was about 13 of them, as well along Flora Abbott and Quarry and Matthew Street. And she really quickly turned those around to get those changed, so I just wanted to thank her for that. Also wanted to thank the DPW for the roadwork that they've been doing with Gaines Street getting milled and a number of other roads in the district. And with that being said, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm the Councilman, Councilwoman Resnady, please.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you. I also wanted to take a second to thank DPW for the great work they've been doing all season. I get comments, emails, calls all the time from residents saying, "Thank you." And we don't seem to say that enough. So also, I think the last time we met, after our meeting, we, classes have started at Binghamton University and SUNY Broom as well. We're all, those of us that teach, at BU and Broom, Councilwoman Skorjic, Councilwoman Riley and myself, we, just like the students, have to adjust to this craziness that's happening. I do wish our students the best of luck. I think it will be okay, as long as they stop congregating in areas where they're not supposed to, and wear their masks and listen to the rules. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that this week is National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Week. And then as a mental health provider, I work every day. I strive for, you know, to get to that point where we are, where mental health or mental illness and suicide is no longer taboo, and we're able to talk openly about it and support those in our community that need that support. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman Riley, please.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, as we approach the upcoming Binghamton City School District school year starting, recognize our superintendent, the principals, the staff, the parents, all of us that are kind of moving as the target moves. This is, again, an extension of what we all had to learn. And our kids are nervous, you know? They saw what happened to the class of 2020, but they, the leadership, the administration, the school board, they've been very resilient in laying out plans for the parents. So I just want to thank them and then celebrate the parents and the students, because this is something we've never faced before, and we're going to have to lean on each other. Because if my Chromebook doesn't work, I'm going to walk down the street and switch with my neighbor. So just as we move forward, let's celebrate this new academic year and all that is to come. I also wanted to highlight that, as you know, there is a community center on 85 Walnut, and most of the programming comes either through the Noma Group or the Binghamton Food Rescue. On Saturday, there's going to be a barbecue and a listening session using all appropriate protocols. But they want to know what the community wants to see in that building, and I think that's important. They also have some great resources through their partnership with Lord. So that information I will post on Facebook. Before I close, I'd also like to thank, as everyone else has, our city employees, in particular Parks and Rec. I know we're switching seasons, and it seems as if we won't be in the parks as much, but they have done a whole heck of a lot this summer, kind of rebounding from COVID and helping me in particular fix our little library in various areas of the third district. And we want to thank you for that. And I think that concludes my announce. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. I have been receiving issues, letters, and I've shared some of them with the entire council. But when our constituents are seeking information, be it a FOIL request, be it who to contact in City Hall, as we are all learning, this information is, shouldn't be common knowledge, particularly FOIL requests. So as we learn the processes, I just want to make sure that we are holding the confidence of our constituents as best as possible and not leaking information before information is readily available. And also that we work together to make sure we know the legal realms and the timelines of which information can be obtained and should be expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman, briefly, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my fellow colleagues, for being adaptable during this time. I know a lot of us work in schools. I do as well. And it has been a challenge trying to translate things, because I think people who aren't teachers, they're like, "Oh, just put it online." And it's not quite that simple, you know? It's difficult to get that, to translate, you know, something that is done in person is actually, that can be quite simple and easy. It can be quite a challenge to get the same spirit of the lesson or discussion online. So I'm sure my colleagues are experiencing that as well. And, you know, shout out to all of the classroom teachers who are adapting to this as well. And of course, all of the other people who work behind the scenes at the schools that, you know, that make this, that allow the show to go on. So thank you for that. I also would like to mention that the census deadline is fast approaching, so there is still time to respond to the census. And the census is hugely important in determining the amount of federal funding and representation that Binghamton gets. And it's really, really important that we get our fair share. So everybody that lives in our community, regardless of citizenship status or age, gender, anything like that, even newborn babies count. So make sure that you respond to the census at my2020census.gov. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I want to echo real quick the thanks to DPW and Parks. I received a call today. Obviously, we're going to have pockets all the way, all the time, of things that we have to work on and issues and problems. But it was nice to receive a positive call today, just saying how the downtown area looks great and just seeing the improvements. And across the city, the roads, the lines being painted. You can tell, if you really pay attention, that there's a lot of attention to detail and that things, the brandy wine just got done both sides. I guess they still got to stripe it. Looks great. So obviously, it's sometimes easy to focus on the negative, but I think for the most part, you can see the improvements that the city's putting in, and you can see the efforts being made to make our city a better place from all standpoints of infrastructure and stuff like that. So I appreciate that. Just real quick, I don't want to make this about me, but I just do want to thank the well wishes and thoughts and prayers from people as I went through some of my struggles over the last few weeks with the colon cancer. And I'm not out of the woods yet, but I do want to give a quick shout out while I have the opportunity in the forum. I didn't have a lot of extra time in my decision-making process, but sometimes it's easy to pick on, you know, we're going to get out of Binghamton to do certain things, got to go somewhere else, got to go anywhere else. And I just want to thank the providers at UHS. I believe I received world-class care right here over the last five weeks, to get a little sentimental. But the gastro group in the hospital on Mitchell General Hospital, as well as the oncology and surgical group on Harrison and Johnson City and Wilson Hospital, treated me with world-class care as far as I'm concerned. And I want to just shout out to those people that have helped me, and I appreciate that. And everybody's got to make their own health decisions, but, you know, we do have a lot of great doctors and facilities, right, in Binghamton and Johnson City. And I just want to thank those people that really helped me, who are going to continue to help me over the next number of months. So back to that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hard for me to switch from serious subject to a happy subject. But I just had a big, had a big cookout at my house over the weekend, and I have a rather large family, and there's a couple of Republicans, believe it or not, in the family. So I'm very used to being in a room with some people that I completely disagree with, but whom I like very much. Anyway, that said, I hope that, you know, this, I hate to go back to it, but the resolution, when we put our resolution in, we never thought that you were going to think that that was the final resolution. We were giving you ideas that we thought were going to be combined with yours. We did not, for a moment, think that that was the, that was a done deal. We thought it was going to be put together. So I just want to get that out there. On a lighter note, I want to thank the South Side Neighborhood Assembly. We had a cleanup last week that went very well. We cleaned up part of my district. We cleaned up part of Phil's district over in front of the Number Five and then up on Vestal Avenue. If you go, anybody drives past there, you'll notice that all the weeds are taken out, anywhere near the sidewalk, all the way down Vestal Avenue to Pennsylvania Avenue and around the corner over to Number Five. It went very well. And Number Five, I was in Number Five. It's totally gutted. He has rented out Number Five already as a renter for the building. It's going to be office space. And one of the promises that they made was that they were going to fix the facade on the one building there. The historic building next to Number Five was Lataz, and he's got the, all the work happening on that building already. And you'll notice that out back, it's all happening. Anyway, so the South Side is, that whole project is happening. I know it's Phil's district, but I drive past it every day. Anyway, so also, anyway, that's about it. The city has been, we needed a speed limit sign. I got speed limit signs for, you know, a day or two for that, you know, your speed limit is this. And people call me, and I call the department, and people do things for us. It's really, really wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. First of all, Councilman Strong, welcome back. I'm glad you're able to join us these last two meetings. I hope your health continues to improve and get better.
Thank you.
On to this, this non-binding resolution. Let's start there. It's a non-binding resolution. It couldn't be any simpler to me. We're supporting Lee Barta, we're honoring Lee Barta, and supporting the Police Department. That's it. It's cut and dry. The rhetoric, if you don't like our version, you like the version better, that doesn't hold any water to me. And the fact that we have two council people, Councilwoman Riley and Councilwoman Friedman, who voted no, speaks volumes how you feel about the Police Department. And I'm super disappointed in that, but that's your choice. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Point of order.